This conference will now be recorded.
Jeff Geiger.
Jeff Geiger, again, state your name and address for the record on the microphone, please, and you have three minutes for your comments.
My name is Jeff Geiger. I live at 5222 16th Street, Zephyr Hills. And my concern is the flooding. Since we've been there, we moved back to this area. I'm a native of Zephyr Hills. My whole family was born and raised in Zephyr Hills. Since we moved back to Zephyr Hills 10 years ago, my girlfriend bought a house on 16th Street, at 5222 16th Street. And every year that the city goes in there and builds the road up, every time it rains, it floods our property that much more. There's an empty lot next to us that we're really afraid that they're going to go in there and build a home on it. And when they build that lot up to build, it's going to flood us out completely. We won't even be able to stay in our property. And, you know, I know they're saying that we've had a lot of extra rain this year. No, I disagree with that. I've been here all my life. I remember you used to be able to set your clock by the rain showers in the afternoon. Zephyr Lake, the way it looks now, that's the way it stayed when I was a kid. I learned to fish in that lake. I learned to swim in that lake. And it's not flooding. It's been that way for years. And my concern is why does the city keep building that road up? And all it's doing is pushing more water over on us. The last good storm that we had out there, when the roads were flooded, people were going through there like 45 and 50 miles an hour, and it was causing big wakes. All the way up in my neighbor's house, her garage got flooded. Our back porch got flooded. And it was simply because of people running through there 40, 45, 50 miles an hour and causing a wake that would just wash right up in our yards. And, you know, I really feel as though something needs to be done with the roads, for one, but mainly the drainage, because the drainage is horrible there. It can rain for 10 minutes. In that corner where we live, at 16th and Third, is a foot underwater. And the water's not going nowhere. It's sitting right there for people to run through it with the cars and flood our yards. And that's, you know, something should be done. I mean, we seem where they're gonna, trying to raise the taxes to do improvements at the park. Well, why don't you fix the neighborhoods before you fix the park? The park is fine. It looks horrible. But that's the way it was. It stayed that way when I was a kid. And I've been here for 70 years. And, you know, why can't we get something done with the drainage in the area?
Well, thank you, Mr. Geiger. And by you say building the road up, is it when they repave it, you mean? Or is, I mean, I don't think we've actually done anything.
We've been back here in this area for 10 years. I moved to Dade City for 15 years and raised my family in Dade City. I raised five kids.
Okay. And so it's just the repaving part of it. But as far, and I'm somewhat familiar with that area. I can't picture it exactly. But I know that the city and the county have both been working diligently and to solve some of the issues that we have. And I'm not sure if that's been a problem area in the past or not. I really don't know. Couldn't say for sure. But as we hear the thunder, it's going to get ready to rain again tonight. And we have had a lot of rain in the last condensed into a short period of time, for sure. So I don't know. Is there any, I just don't know on the issues in that particular part of town. Is it something, maybe Public Works could think?
Where it's at is maybe two blocks behind the Catholic church on Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
And it has, it's always flooded there. But when the city goes in there and builds that road up, it puts more water on our property. And then you get people running through there with their cars, causing a wake. It just floods our place.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, counsel, I can, we, Public Works can look at that. I know that the Public Works directors had, spent the last probably three days, nonstop on the phone, dealing with flooding issues. We'll look at it. I don't, when Mr. Geiger states that we raise up the road, I think he's speaking of repaving.
Right.
So we can look at that. I believe Shane has already looked at it. I will remind counsel, on Tuesday evening, we had four and a half inches in an hour and a half span. There's not a stormwater system that can handle that amount of rain, that intensity and such a short duration.
But we're seeing it all around, the whole Tampa.
Our tables already.
Yeah, the whole Tampa area is having this problem. I mean, Sarasota, Bradenton, St. Pete, Tampa, everywhere.
Yeah, Zephyr Hills is not unique in this situation right now. But I know Shane has been looking at it. I don't know if you've had conversations with this homeowner?
When you talk about we had that four and a half inches, I called the police department to get somebody out there because there was a car going through the water slowly, like he should be. And there was this young person in a truck that come right, and passed him right in front of our house. And that's going to cause one terrible accident. Somebody's going to get killed there. They're running in there hitting that water, and it's just, it's horrible.
Yeah.
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. We have looked at this site. In fact, I have a map of the site right here, that we do have some drainage swales on the side of the road. And I haven't talked to Mr. Geiger personally, but we went out and did a site investigation. And one block over on 17th Street, we had a culvert pipe that was plugged that we unplugged, that may have been withholding some of that water. But this area is typical in a heavy rain event, that it gets water in the swales and then it perks out.
Well, and like you said, unfortunately, it takes a rain for you find out some of these places that are plugged up. And so hopefully, what you've done there will remedy the situation. And maybe we'll find out tonight if that's the case or not. But if it was significantly plugged, I'm sure it was backing it up pretty, pretty bad. So, okay.
My grandparents lived on Eighth Street, just on the other side, just on the south side of C Avenue. My grandparents lived there. And when Hurricane Donna came through here, I was just a kid, but I was walking in water this deep in their house.
And we know that Florida's, it's going to happen. We're going to get hurricanes. So, well, I thank you for bringing it to our attention. And as you heard, he's, the first thing we've done is try to unplug a stuffed up culvert. So hopefully, that will solve the problem. So we'll have to see from going forward. But thank you for bringing it to our attention. Ricardo, you said?
I have none others that have signed up in advance.
Okay. All right. So that is the citizens' comments for items that are not on the agenda. And at this time, it's the mayor's portion of the meeting. The mayor's not here. So the city manager is going to kind of take the lead on this. And we have a couple of fun presentations here. So.
So the first item, 2.1, is the Daughters of the American Revolution, the proclamation. So.
I have the privilege of reading that for my fellow members. Sorry, girls, you're gonna have to be sad if I was being, you know, like down here. Turn this around. Okay. Whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The commitment of the NSDAR is to encourage, study, and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17, 1787. And whereas, the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and recall the achievements of our founders and to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship. Whereas, the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through 23 annually, to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The revolution was later adopted, the resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. George W. Bush officially declared the inception of Constitution Week in 2002. And whereas, the Daughters of the American Revolution is a lineage-based membership service organization for women who are direct descendants of soldiers of the Revolutionary Period who aided the United States' struggle for independence. And whereas, it is the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support it, preserve it, and defend it against encroachment. And now, therefore, I, Jody Wilkson, at the behest of Melanie Barmonston, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills in the state of Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 to 23 to 2024 as Constitution Week. Reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1887 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I have heretofore asked the mayor to set her hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Zephyr Hills, Pasco County, Florida, on this ninth day of September 2024. And I'd like to invite the ladies of the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are also my fellow members. So please join me, and we'll have photographs taken.
All right, squeeze together, pretend you like each other. All right, I'm gonna give you a couple here. There we go. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. And I'll get one with my phone. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, I ask that we move item 2.2 to September 23. The individual that was presenting is out of town and was not able to get back in time. So if we can move 2.2 to the 23rd meeting, then we'll go to item 2.3.
Hey, Chief. Time for the good stuff right here.
Derek Brewer, Police Chief, City of Zephyr Hills. Tonight, I would like to introduce and swear in four of our newest officers. As I go through, I'm going to bring you up individually, bring the person that's going to pin you, and I'll swear you in. And then the person that's pitting you can sit, and then you guys come over here. Okay? So tonight, I'm going to start with Eugene Howard. Just stay right there. Eugene Howard was born and raised in Tampa, Florida. After graduating from Robinson High School in 1991, he began working in security, doing various assignments such as sporting and concert events. In 2000, Eugene began working for the Florida Department of Corrections. He continued his law enforcement career by joining the Pasco Sheriff's Office in 2003, where he was assigned to inmate housing and later to patrol deputy. In 2015, Eugene joined the Zephyr Hills Police Department and spent eight years as a patrol officer. During his tenure at ZPD, he received a lifesaving award and a unit citation award. In May of 2023, Eugene retired from the Zephyr Hills Police Department as the longest-tenured African-American police officer for the department. We're very excited to have Eugene back with us for his next retirement, starting, well, starting last week. So, so we're very excited to have Gene back. So go ahead and get you pinned. Whoever's going to pin you. Go ahead.
If you might want to get Velcro, because.
Yeah, I know.
Everybody has a hard time with those.
All right, Gene. Raise your right hand. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America and the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies, domestic and foreign, and that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same, and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills, of which I am about to enter. So help me God.
Tarbush.
Perfect. Thank you.
Heather? Heather Triplet, a proud native of Pasco County, Florida, graduated from Zephyr Hills High School in 2010. She began her career as a phlebotomist at Pasco Regional Hospital in 2013. However, Heather's passion for public service led her to pursue law enforcement, and she graduated from the Police Academy at Pasco Hernando State College in 2018. After graduation, she joined the Pasco County Sheriff's Office, where she dedicated five years to serving her community. Heather met her fiance in 2021 and welcomed their daughter in 2022. This past June, their family grew with the birth of their son. Heather is excited to continue her law enforcement career and is committed to positively impacting her community as an officer and a dedicated mother. Please help me welcome Heather. We'll go ahead and get her. She actually applied three weeks after giving birth to her son. So she was ready to come back. All right. Can you raise your right hand with her in your hand, in your arms? All right. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America and the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies, domestic and foreign, and that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same, and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills, of which I am about to enter. So help me God.
Good. Thank you.
Kevin? Who's pinning you? Oh, all right. All right. Kevin Massillon was born February 16, 1998, in Miami, Florida, and raised between Haiti, California, and Ocala, Florida. After completing high school in 2016, Kevin attended Valencia College in Orlando, where he studied criminal justice. He graduated with an AS degree and is pursuing his bachelor's degree in business administration. In 2018, Kevin began working as an employee with Lockheed Martin, specializing in building hardware for defense systems for the United States Armed Forces. In 2021, he began his law enforcement career as a correctional officer with the Department of Corrections, where he served as a member of the emergency response team. However, Kevin has always had a passion for becoming a police officer. In 2023, he put himself through the crossover academy at Lake Technical College in Tavoris, while maintaining a full-time work schedule at the prison. We're very excited to have Kevin with us. And ready to get sworn in? All right. I see you got pinned already. All right. All right. Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Kevin Massillon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And the city of Zephyr Hills.
And the city of Zephyr Hills.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Domestic and foreign.
Domestic and foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Loyalty.
Loyalty.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills.
All the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills.
For which I am about to enter.
For which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
And last but not least, Chanel. All right. Chanel Beltran was born and raised in the Bronx, New York. As the oldest of five siblings, Chanel always took on a leadership role, guiding and supporting her younger brothers and sisters. In 2019, Chanel graduated from high school. Following graduation, she pursued higher education at Duchess Community College, where she studied business administration. However, driven by a strong sense of duty and desire to serve her country, Chanel paused her academic pursuits and enlisted in the United States Air Force. In the Air Force, she was stationed at, is it Minot? 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 I thought that T would be silent. Minot Air Force Base in North Dakota. After serving, Chanel moved to Wesley Chapel to be with her family and pursue her career in law enforcement. Chanel is excited to begin her career in law enforcement with the Zephyr Hills Police Department, as she strives to positively impact her community and beyond. Nice work. Chanel, raise your right hand for me. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America and the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies, domestic and foreign, and that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same, and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills, of which I am about to enter. So help me God.
Perfect. Thank you.
Group shot. Yep.
Chief in the middle.
Yeah, chief in the middle. Thank you for that.
Perfect. You're good? One, two. That's good. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, officers Triplet, Massillon, and Beltran. And welcome back, Officer Howard. At this time, I'm going to allow the families to join them in the lobby where they can continue the celebration, and they don't have to maybe get bored. Give them just a second to file out. All right, we have five consent agenda items. And I will move it up to the pleasure of the council, of whether to approve all five or to pull any for further discussion.
I make a motion that we approve all five?
A second?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the five consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, we'll move on to our business items. And the first one is the adoption of the tentative millage.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 4.1 is adopting the tentative millage rate. It is first reading of ordinance number 1492-24, ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, levying the millage rate for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 for the city of Zephyr Hills.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So I'm going to open a public hearing at this time, and we'll get a report from the finance director, I guess?
Come on up, Mr. Wilson.
Yes. Well, we just.
I'm gonna proceed. I just want to go ahead and read something into the record. The millage rate that you're going ahead considering, 6.25. The rollback rate for the city of Zephyr Hills is calculated to be 5.9552 mills, according to Florida statute 200.065. In this ordinance, we are setting the millage rate at 6.25. The 6.25 millage rate is considered a 4.95% increase, according to Florida statute 200.065. 625 is what we've had the millage rate for the past three years. So you're keeping it the same.
Okay.
And that's what our budget is based on.
All right. Thank you, Ted. Do we have anybody signed to speak to this item?
No, we do not.
All right. I'm going to go. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open the council for discussion or a motion.
I make a motion that we pass item 4.1 on the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1492-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. 4.3.
4.2.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4.2.
Yeah. Thank you. 4.2 is adoption of the tentative budget. It's a first reading of ordinance number 1493-24, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, adopting a budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. This is a public hearing as well.
Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to this item?
No.
All right. I will close the public hearing. Okay. All right, well, I'll leave the public hearing open then.
I had asked at our workshop about the capital improvement plan, and I was asked for an explanation about how the total penny for Pasco was funded into the plan.
Yes.
What we talked about earlier today. Funding of the... Excuse me. Funding of the capital funding for the public works facility in parks.
Oh, yes, okay.
Sorry, we had a presentation to go through. So I just quickly clicked the... Sorry. Yeah, it's just a couple clicks. If you don't mind, there we go. So just for this budget, $1.5 billion is the aggregate assessed property value. We budget 95% of that at the proposed millage rate of 6.25 mils. Revenue generated is $9.3 million in ad valorem revenue. The millage rate, which you just approved, the tentative millage rate, this lays out those numbers. Let me go to the next one. Total budget that you're asked to approve tonight as a tentative is $105,266,502, which includes the requests that... All the requests that council had throughout the budget workshops. And then this answers the question that you just asked, the capital funding public works facility. And I'll let Finance Director Ted Beeson go.
Yeah, we went ahead and laid out the expenditures that we expect. In 2025, it would be $2 million for the design, and that would be paid $1.2 million penny for Pasco. It's $600,000 out of the working capital of the utility fund, $200,000 out of the working capital for the sanitation fund. In 2026, we anticipate perhaps expenditures of $6 million, again, split between the various funds. $3.6 million would be handled under our reserves in the general fund, while $1.8 million would be out of working capital again in the utility fund, and $600,000 in sanitation. Then in year three, $10 million worth of construction. And again, be funded $2 million out of reserves in the general fund, and then spread across the rest of the spreadsheet. We would ask for debt financing of $4 million governmental, $1.5 million in the utility, and $600,000 in sanitation, if we haven't worked through our reserves. If we still have adequate reserves, then we would go ahead and use the reserves to go ahead and fund that structure. So out of the $18 million, we anticipate that we would have less than $6 million of debt to go ahead and take on. If you could advance the slide, Ricardo. Then similarly, Zephyr Park, the design is $1 million, and we have that funded out of the ARPA funds that we got from the federal government, construction in 2026. Reserves, you go ahead and have $2 million dedicated for the construction there. Debt finance happened in 2026, 2027, and we would need $8 million to accomplish that. When we have the chance or the opportunity to do the debt financing, we probably wanted to package it together, go out one time in order to get those funds.
What would the total debt be then? The total debt would be...
I think the total debt is $12 million.
$12 million? For the two projects?
For the two projects.
About six and six then.
Correct. Eight million dollars for the Zephyr Park and then...
Oh, all right.
Four, yeah. All right, other. All right, thank you.
But you have any other questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Beeson, what percentage of that is our... Of the total budget? $12 million of $105 million?
Yeah, I mean roughly 10%.
Okay. And is that a... Is that a... Is this a common way that municipalities fund large projects?
Yeah, you want to go ahead and try to match the useful life of the asset and have that financed over a period of time. This building is going to last 30 years or more, and so when we went ahead and built this building, it was financed. It's a common procedure to go ahead and say, when you have these large capital projects, try to pay it off over time.
All right, and just kind of recap. So we've had several workshops on the budget, and this was kind of like our first reading at it. And as the Finance Director indicated, the millage rate has remained the same, and we had just lowered that two years ago. Was that correct?
I think it was a year ago.
We'd lowered it, and so it remains the same. I'm going to close the public hearing and...
Mr. President, if I can, just for clarification purposes, what was presented to you tonight is our idea of how it is funded. It'll all be formalized and be brought back before council. Correct?
Oh, yes. As we go forward, there's going to be plenty of checks, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on the form of debt financing.
Correct.
Try to surprise the staff to proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood. This is not the final plan. This is what we put together, our estimate at the moment, yes, with the information we have. Yeah.
Potentially, could we get funding from another source, like the state or grant funding and things like that, if we pursued that at a later date?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel?
President, have you closed the public hearing?
Yes, I did.
You have, okay. At this time, I'd like to move that we approve the first readings, ordinance number 1493-24, for the adopt this tentative budget.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1493-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. 4.3.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 4.3 is the first reading of ordinance number 1473-24, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating section 51.23 of the City Code of Ordinances, establishing a new schedule of rates and charges for the use or availability for the use of potable water, wastewater, and reclaimed water, providing for repealer severability and an effective date.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and let Ted kind of go through this.
Yeah, the ordinance before you is a modest 3% increase in our water and sewer rates across the board. The last time those rates were increased was October of 2021. So we've had a three-year span during the pandemic, during some record-high inflation. And now we come to you and say we'd like to go ahead and increase those rates 3%. I think that that's justifiable, what we talked about during the budget process, too. These funds were going ahead and budgeted, too. That we are anticipating your passage of this ordinance in order to go ahead and justify what we have in the budget. There is no structural changes in the ordinance brought before you. We're not going to change the method in which we charge our customers. The base rates remain the same, and the use rates have a tiered system very similar to what we've done in the past. No changes.
Thank you, Ted. So you said it's been since 2021, since there's been a rate increase?
That's correct.
Okay, is anyone signed up to speak to this?
No.
All right.
As I recall, yeah, we had a sewer rate.
Speaking earlier.
This is... The rates are proposed just for this year. It's not an automatic renewal in the upcoming years, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and that was one of my concerns when we talked about it just previously, so I'm glad to hear that. Anybody else have any...
I have a couple of questions.
You said that the base rates don't change, so the 3% is only on the usage?
No, no, sir, I'm sorry. The structure is the same, but we will increase the base rates by 3%, and we will increase the usage by 3% as well.
So every... Okay, all right, okay. And then I have a question, because this is based on the utility rate study from last year, and that had built into it rate increases up until 2028.
Correct.
So...
We... So the plan, instead of making it... Because there was... We've heard concerns about having it as... Excuse me, having the rate increase as an automatic renewal each year. We will bring it back before council each of the next, what, three years, opposed to automatic renewal.
All right, and will this go to 2029, since we didn't raise rates last year, or...
No, it'll still stop at 2028, and then we'll have to do a new study. So essentially, what we did was we've... We did not raise the rates last year, as indicated in the study. Right.
So the rates, upcoming rates, will be 2.5%? It's not 3%?
No, the rates are at 3%. We went ahead and say that we were going to take that 3% this year because it had been three years since we had a rating.
Right, I mean, this year will be 3%, but subsequent years, it's 2.5%.
It could be as low as 2.5%. Yes, sir, each year.
I mean, that's what the rate study showed.
Right.
Right. Right now, all we're voting on is the 3% for this year.
Oh, but I'm asking. We're basing those rates on a rate study that included rates for subsequent years.
Right.
So in order to follow the rate study, are we planning on raising rates for the next four years?
Yes, we will come back before council to ask for the rates to be increased, potentially, depending on what happens with projections. But based on that study, yes, we will come back before council each of the next three years to ask for rate increases. But not the right... I'm not sure if that's...
Well, what I'm saying, are we following the rate study or not? I guess.
Yes. Yeah, the rate increases are based on the rate study.
The next year, projected, would be 2%.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so that answers your question then, right? It's just based on that.
My recollection was during this study is that our rates were the lowest or some of the lowest in the whole region, and that we had not raised rates enough, so they were proposing like a 10% increase, and we were like, no, 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 no. Let's do it over a period of time. I think that's my recollection of the rate study discussion.
Oh, I don't remember that.
Previous, but, yeah. This was a modest rate increase, but it was... We're kind of in line with what Pasco County is doing.
We're in the middle.
And, yeah, we're not... We're certainly not the lowest, but...
We were mid-range.
Correct, yes, sir.
I think maybe it was that... It was before that then, 2023, right?
Part of the last conversation that we had last year was looking at changing it to increase by the CPI, which would have been higher this past year. But that was reduced... That... We withdrew that request, and we're going with the study, and we're not going with the CPI.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, and I like the fact that we are looking at it year by year. All right, I am going to close the public hearing and turn it to counsel.
Counsel President. You choose, Mr. Dale just walked back in.
All right. Did you want to speak to this item?
We're on the utility rates. So if you'd like to speak to it, you have to come to the microphone. If not, you can come back to the September 23rd, which is the second reading.
We'll talk about it again on September 23rd. Yeah, and then we'll have this again on the September 23rd, beating this exact same discussion. Okay. All right, the public hearing has been closed, and a pleasure to counsel at this point.
But he wants to do it, but... I'll move that we pass the first reading of ordinance number 1473-24.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1473-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, 4.4.
4.4 is first reading of ordinance number 1490-24, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, annexing approximately 12.92 acres, more or less, into the corporate limits of the city described as parcel 182622-0010-00500-0000, Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date. And this is also a public hearing.
At this time, I'll open a public hearing, and we'll hear from Rodney.
Good evening, counsel. Principal Planner Rod Corvo. This is a... Just to give you a 30-second refresher, this is a three-part application and annexation into the city, a future land use map amendment of light industrial, and then a zoning amendment to... Excuse me, sluma to industrial and then zoning to LI, light industrial. As Matt said, it's approximately 13 acres. We do have capacity under the existing water use permit for industrial. The applicant is Baduka Foods. There is no application right now for development. This is for potential future development, okay? So at the time that there is an actual application brought forth, at that time, we'll do the full environmentals, traffic impact, and such. This fits nicely into our objective of the land, the land around the airport, the industrial corridor. So staff is recommending approval. The applicant's representative is here if you have any further questions.
All right, thank you, Rodney.
I'd like to just clarify one thing. The applicant's 5L properties. I think potential end user is planning to be Baduka Foods, but it's 5L properties is the applicant.
Thank you. Yes, I apologize on that.
Okay.
That's correct.
Ricardo, is anyone signed to speak to this item?
No, I don't have anyone signed to speak to this item.
All right. Anybody like to speak to this item? All right, discussion? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn to counsel.
President, I move that we approve the annexation as proposed by staff, ordinance number 1490-24.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1490-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
This is item 4.5. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1491-24, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, changing from county IL to city IN industrial, and the zoning designation from county AC to city LI, light industrial, for approximately 12.92 acres of real property located south of Sixth Avenue, west of Chancy Road, and east of the Zephyr Hills Municipal Airport, having parcel ID 182622-0010-00500-0000, providing for repealer conflict severability and an effective date. And again, the applicant's 5L properties, and I think that the proposed end user would be an expansion of our... and I think that the proposed end user would be an expansion of the already, the Baduca manufacturing facility.
Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing, and I'll let, and Rodney, just for questions, do you want to just?
Just for questions.
Okay. Has anybody signed up to speak to this?
No.
Okay, council, you have any questions for Rodney on the zoning?
Yeah, Rodney, this is the same, it's through for Baduca.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, 5L technically, yes.
Thank you.
5L, yeah, making a.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Now I'll close the public hearing. Council.
President, I move we approve ordinance 1491-24 on its first reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second to approve ordinance 1491-24 on the first reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney, just want to reiterate that when you use the word development, this is industrial and industrial for the airport area.
And anticipated purchaser, I believe, is under contract is Baduca Foods to, it's right next door to where the big facility is going.
Did I read the right number?
Yes. I think you did.
I was watching.
And 4.6 is the resolution number 827-24, resolution by the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, relating to height, approving a conditional use to exceed the height limitations of the LI, light industrial zoning district on parcel 0726220000001000012, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and providing for an effective date. Now, the applicant on this is Elise USA 19, Inc., which is the, the company that owns the land of Baduca Foods. It's essentially Baduca Foods, and I think we've checked with airport and all the surrounding areas. It's for the manufacturing facility conditional use to for them to go up to 63 feet on a portion of their facility.
Right, and we've had some discussion on that before, so I'm, I'm going to open a public hearing. Todd, you just.
Very briefly, at our last meeting, you saw the comprehensive Baduca PowerPoint presentation showing the subject property located southwest corner of Sixth, Chancy Road and South Avenue, Sixth, Sixth Avenue, I'm sorry. We, we brought up this one slide here, this one actually shows the height. I think you recall at the meeting, myself and the applicant's representative, who is here tonight as well, if you have any questions, but they had to go up to 63 feet, and that necessitates the conditional use petition, of course, going over 30 feet. And again, as the city attorney mentioned, they've been through FAA, and the FAA has approved that height. So that, that's the purpose where we do a resolution, it just says one public hearing that we're doing tonight. If you have any questions, but you can see the various different heights that are identified in the different phases here. You can see on top there the heights of 63 feet.
And as I recall, they even kind of reconfigured their initial plans to make sure that it was as far away from any
Yeah.
issues as possible, so.
And again, we didn't want to proceed until we had FAA approval, and they have that.
And my recollection is also that the building is kind of stepped, so it's not like this, some, you know, freestanding giant space.
Right.
And it's for the robotics inside, right?
Correct, for the manufacturing process that they, they're required, need to do, they, they need that height.
What are the, so what exactly are they using the extra height for?
For their operations and.
One of their machinery.
Yes, another machinery. Yep.
The silo?
David's here, Fleeman, Mr. Fleeman.
Okay.
I'm Greg Crawford with Florida Engineering Group, 5127, South Orange Avenue. Really what happens with the 63 feet, they have certain mechanical equipment, they have inside some machinery that does require the 63 foot on the inside on that, so the silos, they're, they're going to be just internal, they got some processing that going that way, but this 63 foot is strictly for some equipment that just, they need some height for to fit that inside the, the building.
So they're going to need it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ricardo, has anyone signed to speak to this?
I don't have anyone signed to speak.
All right. I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
President, I move approve the first and only reading of resolution number 827-24.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve resolution 827-24, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you, Todd. And now we're going to the planning director report, which is Todd, but we're going to, we're going to flip 5.2 and put that in front of 5.1.
Actually, Mr. President, can we just move 5.1 to the end of the section? We'll do 52, 53, 54, and then go back to 51.
Move 51 all the way to the end of the.
Yes, sir, please.
We need a motion for that, or is it just internal?
I don't think so, yeah.
All right, so we're starting with 5.2.
Yeah, well, tonight, the planning department's excited to share an Esri GIS software product that we're very interested in providing in our GIS software offerings, that we strongly believe that it's going to help the planning department conduct our business. I'll be introducing some representatives from Esri in just a second. Appreciate their patience going through this meeting, we didn't know how long, we're going to have to be online till we got to their item, but the cert, city currently uses an ArcGIS platform agreement that we've had with Esri, and been using that with other departments, helped the GIS needs since 2020. I believe we all can have come to realize that, that important, powerful planning tools, tools, being able to visualize how a, a project is going to look. To be able to see the project, the site, before any activity is done on it, and then post-construction, being able to see how that finished product looks from not only the use, the grades, the, the elevations, the architectural elements, and, and even the buffering, make a big difference. So it's been a big topic of discussion, so we, we've had the opportunity to, both myself and Tommy Lee, we've both been at conferences, and we're introduced to this new Esri Arc urban software that we believe is going to provide a very powerful planning tool, not only for staff, but for planning commission, for you guys to be able to see projects as they develop. So I think right now, what I'd like to do is, we, we have Ms. Judy Fong on, online, that, that's virtually with us tonight, and we're going to go through a few PowerPoint showing some slides, and then we'll, she's going to take over the screen and show some additional information as well. Just Judy Fong, are you with us still?
Yes, hi, everyone, thank you, Todd, and the city team for inviting us, the Esri team, again, I don't know, 2% tonight, my name is Judy Fong, I am a solution engineer on Esri Smart Cities team, and the Esri team has been working with City of Zephyr Hills to get planners enabled with, you know, scenario planning software to support, you know, long-term planning efforts within the city. I also have a few members joining me today on the Esri side, which will be able to support questions, if there are any questions that comes up. Again, really appreciate the opportunity tonight to give everyone an overview of, you know, what Ajust Urban platform is, and how it can help the city to conduct streamlined planning workflows. So I'm going to go through a really quick overview, so Ajust Urban is essentially a 3D digital plan platform that supports collaborative data-driven planning. It is a platform where all stakeholders dynamically design and provide feedback. It is data-driven, there are proper modeling tools and analysis tools for planners to assess impact of urban proposals. And it is an urban planning tool, so it combines a lot of strategic scenario planning with the digital system records for zoning and land use. Next slide, please. So there are a few major components of Ajust Urban that can support, so planners, designers, or even, you know, developers, they can use the platform to test different proposed variances to find maximum potentials. You can also use the platform to validate proposals, again, regulatory code, you know, zoning, land use regulations. And you can also easily visualize and assess impacts and benefits of any zoning or land use scenario for property owners, developers, or elected officials as well. Next slide, please. So planning teams, a lot of the time, needs better methods to facility updates, to comprehensive plan, many zoning updates, and report on a lot of important metrics like housing production, employment opportunities, and mobility. So Ajust Urban can lower the cost and impact of these plan updates by creating this data-driven framework for you to offer new plans, you can very quickly iterate scenarios in 3D on the platform with a very intuitive interface. And it also allows you to collaborate, of course, internal teams and third-party firms as well. Next slide, please. So a lot of the time, today's systems are restricted by silo data, so we see the need to, for planning departments to integrate different datasets to speed up design review process. So Ajust Urban provides a platform for a planning team to review different proposals and plans that get submitted to the city. You can integrate 3D dataset, you know, then proposals, and they give a more accurate and clear guidance to both the planning team and developers, and foster that common understanding between, you know, public and privacy. And it's also helped the city to be compliant with any regulatory policies and growth targets. Next slide, please. So I would like to just give a sneak peek of, you know, some of the core functionalities of Ajust Urban. So first of all, Ajust Urban is completely 3D platform, so it allows you, allows planners to sketch out scenarios really quickly in 3D, and all these buildings are entirely, you know, up to the planners to design. And most importantly, after you generated these scenarios, Ajust Urban comes with a little box indicators that immediately tells you, you know, how many housing units that you'll be, being generated on a particular site, you know, number of jobs generated, required parking, even a lot of other important environmental capacity metrics, like, you know, waste water, water usage, air quality, those kind of information as well. And Urban allows planners to test land use and zoning code changes in 3D. This is one of the core features of the platform, so it allows planners to very easily see, you know, for example, increasing or decreasing density in an area, what would that actually look like on the ground? Does that, you know, complement the system neighborhood statistic, or are there any that, you know, will be beneficial to the community, so it will very easily help planners to see what that looks like on the ground and make a more informed decision. The platform also comes with sustainability analysis, so for example, if you want to, if planners want to identify areas to increase, you know, housing productions, maybe wanted to also emphasize on sustainability amenities, right? Maybe increase housing areas that are close to health center, station, so those are the things that we can build into the platform to understand and relate those potential opportunity sites. And then lastly, there are a lot of interactive spatial analysis tools within the platform that planners can use to understand, for example, shadow impact, you know, taking into account elevation of certain areas, making more informed decisions on, you know, building density, height, and things like that as well. So that's the end of the overview presentation, and with that, I would like to maybe take over the screen and show a really quick live demonstration to show, you know, everyone how this actually works in action.
Right now, the resident, Judy.
All right, so, all right. So it looks like I'm sharing my screen right now. All right, so for this quick live demo, I'm going to show you how the Ajust Urban platform looks like. I'm using an example city demo over here, City of Fortin, California. And right off the bat, as you can see, Ajust Urban is a completely web-based tool, it's also 3D-based, so it's, makes it really easy for planners to have access to all the planning information that they have. And as I zoom into the Urban model here, you can see planners can have different projects and plans stored within this one single platform. So, you know, you can constantly working on, you know, different projects and plans at the same time, and you don't have to worry about, you know, losing track of certain projects and plans and processes. And as, because Ajust Urban is 3D, it already comes with these pretty existing building contexts that you can leverage to produce really good digital plan for whatever city area that you're working with, before you conduct any planning scenario analysis. And on the top left here, there are three major components of Ajust Urban. The first component is the project component, which kind of more tied into supporting current planning and project tracking purposes. So imagine if you have a project that comes in, you wanted to review the rendering of the projects, you can use this functionality to track where, and where these projects are being proposed. You can customize the statuses according to City of Zephyr Hills permitting system, so that you can use it as a permit tracking platform, as well as the project review platform as well. And then we have the plans component, which supports long-range planning, so comprehensive plan updates, or any, you know, downtime redevelopment plan, that's, you know, longer range planning initiatives. All those activities can happen here, and as I mentioned before, you can have multiple, many different projects that you're working on at the same time and store in one single platform. And then lastly, we have indicators, indicator is basically an area where planners can load information that can give you more insight about the cities. In this example, City of Fortin are really interested in looking at housing growth, so they do have some data that's going to help inform them, identify areas that might need higher housing. And I have opened up one of the plan to walk you through very quickly what the scenario planning tool looks like. So this is a transit-oriented development plan that I have opened up here, this is the plan area. And just a little bit of background, this plan is regional, this plan area was known mostly for industrial use, but the city would like to rezone this area to promote higher density, and also increase capacity, since this is an area that's right next to the train station, so it's a great candidate site for transit-oriented development. So right now, I am looking at the existing condition scenario here, as you can see, as a planner, I can easily zoom in and interact with the machine and understand what currently exists on the ground, and as you can see in this area, majority of the apartments are as many as. I can also interact with the data on the side panel as well, to get a better understanding of what other zoning districts are currently included in this plan area that I'm working on. And if I want to understand better about zoning potentials, as I mentioned, because Ajust Urban is 3D, you can actually leverage the 3D capabilities to beneficialize what the maximum potential for selected parcel would be based on the zoning regulations. And I can easily rezone area on the platform to understand, you know, for example, if I increase density or height, maximum height within this area, or on this particular parcel. what would that actually look like on the ground, you know, does that, uh, impacts my neighborhood, um, characteristics, um, does that, you know, um, look good, um, you know, alongside existing neighborhood as well. So this is something basically give planners a really great sandbox environment to test out different zoning, definitely come up with a preferred scenario. And I'm going to switch over to, um, an example scenario here showing, you know, what that would look like, um, if an area is being known, um, to allow for higher density, use development, as you can see, uh, majority of the parcel here is already being rezoned, um, to allow for um, high-density residential, um, and commercial development. And within the address driven platform, there are also a lot of default tools and planners leverage to very quickly, um, visualize, right, actual buildings, um, onto parcels and understand, you know, what that would actually look like. So as you can see just now, you know, just with a few clicks, I was able to generate a very simple building on the ground, um, I have a lot of capabilities that I can leverage, um, to further address, you know, different shapes of the building. Um, and then most importantly is the ability to understand impacts. So in addition to, you know, visually understand, you know, what new proposed developments could look like, um, you, the I just urban comes with, um, what we call capacity metrics, um, to help you immediately understand, you know, if I generated this building right here, um, what's the total number of households, um, sales tax revenue, um, market value, construction cost, trips, drops, you know, what this impact could look like. And I'm going to turn over to, you know, one of a fully built-out scenario just to show you what that would look like. So this is a high-density scenario, um, that we're looking at here, and you can switch between, um, different scenarios to see what that changes could look like um, in this environment. So it's really helps planners to understand, you know, um, impacts of different scenarios that they come up with, um, and help them pick and choose the one that will work best, um, based on the community needs. And one last thing that I wanted to quickly walk through, um, is, um, I just urban also worked very well with another, um, S3 platform called City Engine, um, to allow you to visualize more realistic uh, buildings. So, you know, during the community engagement process, you know, it's really important to, um, communicate to important stakeholders or the public, uh, what potential development could realistically look like. Um, so we also give you capabilities to, um, make your potential scenarios more realistic looking, um, so that public and, you know, important stakeholders can actually see and visualize what that would actually look like on the ground. Um, and yeah, and I think that's all I have, um, in terms of the demo for today, and, um, I will give it back to the city team and I will see if there are time for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Judy. And I, I think this is a really valuable tool because, um, not a lot of people, in fact, most people can't read working drawings or topographical map or a site plan, so they miss out on some of the questions that they may have or comments they may have, and this is going to give all the interested parties an opportunity to see what is being talked about, and then maybe it does spur around some questions that wouldn't ordinarily, uh, they wouldn't ordinarily have. So, uh, I'm assuming Todd, this is a new uh, software program that you're looking to move to, because I know we have a GSI right now, but you're looking to move to a
Yeah, I want to, yeah, I want to thank Judy, Zach, and the rest of their Esri team that has spent quite a bit of time with staff. Our whole team has been involved at conferences, we've done some online virtual meetings as well, uh, to get, uh, deep into this, to see what the opportunities are. I hope you had a chance to understand what we're able to do and, uh, you know, and part of this is we're updating our city comprehensive plan. And I, I think having a tool like this, when we're, how we're going to grow, what it looks like, that's one of the key elements, priorities that we're looking at this coming comp plan, well, whether it's an area out northeast of the city, a large 2,000 acre, you could lay out different scenarios with all these different variables, some examples that you've seen here, uh, and then you could scale into a small property where you're looking at a, a four-story apartment or hotels, or you could look at a potential, uh, new redevelopment scenario. And again, you can throw in all these variables, uh, floor ratio, density, intensity, and you just put in those variables and it, it shows you. So, yeah, a lot of power in the abilities to be able to visualize and see different alternative planning development scenarios. So, um, yeah, we, what, what we're looking at, uh, Tommy Lee would be the gatekeeper, you know, she's our GIS community planner, and she would, uh, gatekeeper on, on this software program. Actually, with the proposal that we have, it's in, in your attachments, we have two licenses, so, you know, uh, she would be the gatekeeper, but we'd also have the opportunity to have another planner that would get educated and, and learn about the software too. So happy to answer any questions. I, I, I'd like to get it as soon as possible because with where we're at in the comp plan update, I, I do have monies budgeted in, in the planning department that we could get it paid for, uh, this fiscal year if, if council's in agreement and, and then the, it's a one-time cost of the 49,000 that you see in there, and that includes the software, uh, the implementation, the training, getting us all set up and do, do what they do to allow us to be able to move forward with this. And then there's a, uh, a $3,300 for the licenses that would, would come every year, like, like a typical license would, but that, the other 49 is just a one-time fee.
Is it Tommy Lee getting an opportunity to demo it at all, or is it something that she'll be able to get up to speed fairly quickly on, or?
I'm very positive with, uh, Tommy Lee's abilities.
Yeah, no, I know she's been doing great so far.
To learn it, to do it. Um, and there was another option, be a little cheaper, but this, this way, uh, they're helping us get it all implemented, and we get it done quicker and just get Tommy Lee and the other planners trained on it so we can move forward and
Right, and I think it's important for others to be able to be trained on it too.
Exactly.
And then did all of, I mean, I know this is, you know, coming through the planning department, but there's other departments that will be, um,
Yeah, there's
Using it. Did everybody have seen like this, uh, particular?
Well, I, I think that, yeah, the GIS is housed in the planning department, but we, of course, work with all the city departments and handling a lot of utility maps and, and again, with all the data information that's available through the software, you, you saw a glimpse of it today. Even economic data we're able to provide, um, but yeah, all the departments will, will be able to take advantage of the new and better maps and visuals that could show utility lines, uh, what you didn't see in, in the presentation, you can see above ground, underground, can show all the infrastructure.
That's great. That's, I think it's very valuable.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? I'll start down with Steve.
Well, um, well, two questions. Would this, you know how I've kind of struggled with when we've been doing some of the annexations and doing, um, site plans, would, would this be able to help us assist in that and, and providing more realistic?
Yeah, absolutely. What you didn't see too is that if we can ask an applicant, like if they have a, a, a file uh, of their proposed hotel or apartment, we can plug that in, and then you'll see an actual realistic uh, street view with the grades and, yeah, so it'll be a, a real life. And i- if they, if the applicant is a smaller mom and pop, if they don't have a a visual, uh, uh, file for us to put into the system, then we, we can use figures or, or find something that we can substitute.
It's, it's more important for some of the bigger ones, um, larger ones. Um, would that also provide then, those kinds of site plans would provide the economic data and?
Yeah, yeah, all that economic data will be generated.
Is this a, um, sole source, or how do you buy that?
Sole source, good question. I, I meant to bring that up. We're already an Esri customer.
Okay, alright.
And we, we, I, I, I was at a conference, I, I got a demonstration of it. Tommy Lee just got back from the GIS conference and she got a presentation of it, so we'd like to stick with the current Esri platform that we already have, and yeah, so we could sole source this and, uh, go through that process.
Mr. President. Todd, could we literally with this program, could we do a walkthrough on a project so we could get right on the ground?
Like street view, you can see the street view, you can bring up aerials, uh, from the county, and, and yeah, you can have that street view.
Sounds to me like it's going to be a great tool for your department to, um,
Correct.
Really show us what, what we're going to get for a finished project.
Seeing is believing, right?
And, uh, just one other comment, and that is that I, I'm very excited about this because one of the things, uh, Mr. Vanderburgh and I talked about is that we often have applicants with varying degrees of sophistication level, so some of them may not have an architect that can provide all of this, of the bells and whistles. So if we can just get enough information, one of the challenges we've had is that we look at a, we look at a development and it's on a very complex topographical, um, condition, like it's at the top of a hill. Well, they show us a drawing or a rendering and it doesn't have any context, and now we, we can really look at that and look at what it's going to look like as you're driving down the road or standing in front of it. So I think that's going to be very valuable for us for presentation purposes too. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh,
I would move to support this expenditure, yeah.
Well, you said you had it budgeted, right, so?
Yeah, we have it budgeted.
Because of the cost, we need council to approve it.
President, I approve that we, uh, approve the expenditure of approximately $49,000 for the new GIS software.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the, uh, purchase of the new GIS, uh, software. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Desri folks online.
Alright, so now we're going to go right down the line on, uh, 5.1.
5.3.
Number 5.3. Okay.
Good evening. Tommy Lee Hunt, GIS technician and community planner with the city of Zephra Hills. Tonight we have the Mitec annexation rezoning future land use map amendment. This project is located two parcels just south of Tucker Road and east of the Paul Buckman Highway, west of the CSX Railroad. You can see in this red box, those are the two parcels that are up for annexation. Here you can get a closer look of said parcels. The total acreage is roughly 10 acres more or less. The existing land use is vacant and one parcel does have a residential structure on it. The existing future land use is county industrial light with the applicants proposing a future land use of industrial. The existing zoning is county AC, which is agricultural, and they're proposing a zoning of light industrial within the city. The projected use for the two parcels for annexation is primarily for utility infrastructure and a secondary emergency exit to Mitec's future manufacturing facility that will be located to the south. And this, um, application does meet the annexation criteria outlined in state statutes, chapter 171.043. Notably, criteria number one that essentially says the total area to be annexed must be contiguous to the municipality's boundaries and reasonably compact. And criteria two, which just says that the area to be annexed must be developed for urban purposes. The requested, um, future land use amendment for these two parcels is compatible with the abutting properties. The proposed FLUMA is also consistent with Florida statutes, chapter 163, part two, the city of Zephra Hills Comprehensive Plan and the city's land development code. It is consistent with the land use and development trends of the area as well as it's located in our industrial corridor. The requested zoning designation as well is consistent with the development patterns of the area and the surrounding properties. The proposed zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the land development code, and other city codes and ordinances. The rezoning and future land use map amendment furthers the goals of the comprehensive plan while remaining consistent with adjacent zoning and providing for employment opportunities and increased tax base. As the city grows, the demand for industrially zoned properties continues to grow as well. A public service analysis projected that the impact to police services is already within the city's existing service capabilities for fire, the anticipated demand as well is within the county's current capabilities. For water, according to the applicant and the utilities department, the anticipated impact is roughly 3 million gallons per year, and the utilities department has deemed that this application is beneficial to the city as well. It does not, it is not subject to the current moratorium. The allotted amount within our water use permit does satisfy for this project. Future development of this property as well as the property to the south, um, will be required to utilize the city's sanitation services, and the impact is anticipated to be minimal. At the time of the submittal for this particular application, a formal traffic impact study was not required, though this will be revisited at the time of the site plan application. And industrial impacts on the school system is typically negligible.
Ma'am. Um, the impact, this is the, are, are you talking, these impacts would be on the entire property, not this 10 acres, is that right?
For the water, it would be for the entire property, um, for all of it, it will be for the, all the properties.
Oh, for this 10 acres, really, there's, you're just adding this 10 acres to 110 acres or so.
Correct.
And, but these impacts won't be from that 10 acres, it's from the whole property.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
The impact from just the 10 acres is very minimal. And the site plan committee did recommend approval of this annexation rezoning and future land use map amendment at its meeting on July 16th. The, the planning commission as well recommended approval at its meeting on August 27th. And tonight staff is recommending approval for the council's execution.
Okay, thank you, Tommy Lee, for that presentation. Um, yeah, and industrial, this is a, as you kind of alluded to, it's a minimal impact on a lot of the areas that we have, um, you know, maximum impacts for residential, but industrial, and it's a, and it's a great tax base too, so. Anybody have any other questions?
Well, I have one more then. So the, this 10 acres is owned, is shown on the map, it's already owned by the people who are doing Mitec?
Yes, this, these two parcels are already owned by Mitec.
Hey, so we're looking for approval of the annexation?
Do you need, um, or do you need?
Is this consensus or a motion?
This is just a planning report, just a consensus.
Okay.
So we're, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think us
But if we have consensus that we're headed the right way, we'll bring in ordinance back to you.
Okay. Alright, and then 5.4, just continuation of this, I would assume.
So this, um, presentation is for the conditional use application to exceed the maximum height restrictions within the city, which is 30 feet. The projected use for this application is for the industrial manufacturing facility. This is subject to the two southern parcels just south of the ones for the previous application. This is located east of the Paul Buckman Highway, west of the CSX Railroad, and just north of Chancy Road. Here you can get a closer look of the two parcels, it's roughly 100 acres more or less. Here you can see the subject site viewed from Paul Buckman Highway looking southeast. And within the light industrial zoning designation, light industry and manufacturing facility is permitted as of right. Therefore, the essential issue for the conditional use Therefore, the essential issue for the conditional use is a forty six foot manufacturing building. And that height is just to ensure that their cranes and other equipment are able to fit within the facility. Here we have a concept plan. This is showing the building that is centrally located. It is more towards the north of those two parcels, so the southern half will for now be undeveloped. This application does ensure or require that the future development meet the criteria of the conditional use, which are outlined in the city's LDC, Land Development Code, part eleven dot ten dot zero zero. And it just says that the future development must not adversely affect the neighborhood. It must be consistent with the surrounding area character, have adequate screening and buffering. It must meet the requirements of the light industrial zoning district. And it must provide for adequate parking and satisfy any traffic concerns, as well as provide sufficient training. Other important considerations. The applicant did provide reports from the FAA that there is no expected concerns with the proposed height within proximity to the Zephyr Hills Municipal Airport. As well, the utilities department has indicated that there is adequate water supply to service this future development. And again, it's not subject to the current moratorium. The conditional use petition was approved by the Site Plan Review Committee on July sixteenth. Planning Commission as well recommended approval at its meeting on July twenty seventh. And tonight, staff is looking for direction from council.
Thank you again. And I see that FAA, well, that wasn't even my question, so that's already been answered. Does anybody else have any other questions?
She answered all mine, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think, I'm sure we have consensus to move forward with this also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy Lee. All right, five point one.
Out a question about that kind of, on that Mytech property on the south west corner, there's, it's part of a PUD. Is that owned by Gain, that goes with the Gainey or?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the Gainey PUD. We brought that back for a PUD modification recently.
Right, but that's, it's not their property, that's a Gainey property.
Correct. Okay, one more item to report on, and it's a moratorium update, petitions that council had placed on, or petitions received for a couple of different items, three different items, indoor storage facilities, outdoor storage for RVs, and also lay down areas. So I think what I'd like to do is give you kind of an update on each three of those categories. In my memo, you saw kind of an update and some recommended alternatives, so we can talk about those today. You can give me any input that you have, or need to think about it, and email me some recommendations that you all have. But we want to begin the discussion, and we'll, we'll start with the indoor storage facilities. That one under that moratorium. I, on my agenda memo, I'll just summarize there, the use, that's for your typical mini warehouses and the more recent multi-level indoor storage facilities. And, and sometimes they also include outdoor storage with those indoor storage facilities as well. I provide a little history identifying multiple areas where we've had the indoor storage facilities. We have that one that's actually on North three oh one. It's actually in the county on the west side there, north of Cossack Road, kind of near that Phelps area. And we've also had the indoor storage facility that was part of a mixed-use development. That's located at the northwest corner of three oh one in Pretty Pond. And then we've also had the, the one south of Daughtry Road on the west side of Gaug Boulevard. And then we've also had one that we just brought up at the southwest corner of Chancy Road and, and State Road thirty nine. So those were the projects that we had that were not subject to the moratorium. And so then I, I bring up some alternatives. One, of course, you could have no change. Another thought that we had is you could change all the uses that come through to be a conditional use under the C two, C three, and LI zoning. Or, or you could take them out of any of those zoning categories. The other option that we were thinking of is that you could no longer allow an indoor storage facility as a separate use on a individual parcel. So that, that was something that we thought of. If you take them out of the, being a separate use and make them required to be a part of a, a mixed-use project, for example, like the one on Pretty Pond and three oh one, where it's situated in the back corner but part of mixed use, wouldn't stand out as much, so that's an option. And I think we have a picture that we can show. Another, something that I did a little research and found some examples are, and we got a couple of photos here that show where you could have an actual mixed-use building with retail or office on the bottom floor, or two floors. And then you could have indoor storage that, that's located above that. So that, that's another option. So we, we kind of came up with a multitude of different options. And then also the consideration, do you want to have like outdoor storage included with an indoor storage facility like this that would be used for RVs, boats, motorhomes? Sometimes you'll see that in the, in the indoor storage facility properties. So yeah, I, I guess maybe what we can do is just for each, each of these three categories, just open it up for discussion. I'd probably be interested in hearing the comments of, I know we don't have the mayor here today and, and one of our council members, but if you have any comments after going through this that you'd like to share with staff, or probably open it up.
Okay, first, where are we, in the moratorium itself, where are we sitting as far as?
We're, we're getting very close to the moratorium date.
And, and as I recall, a portion of the moratorium is because of, you know, the areas where they were going to be. So I think that some of those things you brought up are, are some things that deserve discussion. Do we want to discuss here, or do we want to? You said, mentioned something about maybe meet individually, or how do you?
Well, I, I'm open if you have some comments.
Yeah, thanks for if anybody has anything right off the top of their head.
Or I can meet with you individually, or you can email me comments, I'm, I'm kind of open to.
Well, maybe we could throw a few comments tonight, but then still meet with you on, you know, some more specifics. So go ahead.
Yeah, I, I like your idea of possibly meeting with us individually so that you can go through those four options that you gave us, okay? It'll help me make a better decision on which option I feel is best.
Yeah, because he had mentioned conditional use also.
Yeah, there's a lot of options.
So that probably, it probably would need more discussion from you on, on those, where they've been used in the past and other places and things like that. So maybe if we have a couple of direct questions or comments for you tonight, okay, go ahead.
So you and I have talked about this a lot. In fact, one of the reasons, I think, one of the impetus for the, for the moratorium ban was, you know, the good thing about these facilities is that they are low impact on our water, on our, it's low impact on our
Services.
Services and traffic generation. But aesthetically, you know, these are soulless buildings that, you know, there's nobody, you know, no one's using them. So, you know, for me, I think I told you that story about, I drive into historic section of Bradenton, and right there, front and center on a major intersection, is this three-story building, you know, life storage. And it's just, you know, it's, it's not really, ideally, it's not ideal for that use. That, that they're great as part of a multi, a multi-use site, particularly if they're located adjacent to, you know, apartment buildings where people are, you know, living in smaller quarters and need a place to store their things. But I'm, I for one, don't want to stop the construction of them because I think, you know, because for one thing, I'm, I'm for, you know, development, smart development, and, and, you know, developing properties for their highest and best use. On the other hand, I think we need to think about what is the experience of pedestrians as they walk down streets and drive down our roadways. That's, that's it for me.
And I totally agree with that. That's why, you know, when you mentioned the multi-use type thing, that kind of stood out to me as, as one option. But I mean, maybe we need to look into, obviously, the storage units are going to be needed with the, you know, the different apartments and townhomes and so forth. But maybe we need to start making the, them put some storage facilities on their property as we go forward. I mean, they're creating a need, maybe they, you know, and they can tie it in with something of a multi-use type building.
Yeah, I like.
Just, just throwing it out there as other things.
Like Councilwoman's idea, yeah, probably strategically locate it in, in close proximity to like multifamily projects is, yeah, a good access to them.
Well, the, the ones at the Publix, I mean, there is one there in apartments, so that is kind of worked out, you know.
Yeah, that one did.
You know, I, I think when you, I, I think the last two projects you've done, the one particularly on, on three oh one, south of Daughtry, is a very attractive storage building, I guess.
Tucked away.
It's tucked away, they, the, the front building is brick and glass, and I mean, it, it has nice entry. It's the nicest one of the, in that area, actually. And, and even the one up off Pretty Pond is not bad, considering, it's not a typical low sprawl, orange door type thing. So, and even something like that one up there.
Mixed use, yeah.
It's pretty good. I don't really like the idea of outdoor storage because I don't think we have that much space that would allow for that, unless maybe you're in industrial park. That would be the only spot, but, you know, as you know, that's a very low tax type.
Yeah, correct.
Rev, gen, generator. But I think the only place I would be for something like that would be on an industrial site that otherwise, you know, you don't want something like that on three oh one or.
Yeah, we'll, we'll jump to that, that's a separate category, we can talk a little bit more about that, but.
No, I, I, how far are we into the moratorium, because we renewed it, right?
Yeah, yeah, we extended it, and we, we've got a, within the month, we've got a.
Oh, it's up in a month?
Yeah, within this month, we're supposed to have it. So we've identified it at Planning Commission. They, they didn't have a lot of comments on the indoor storage. They suggested, you know, let, let the market dictate it, and I, I didn't ask them to do the same thing. We had a long comprehensive plan, traffic mobility element discussion before that, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's part of it. I, I think the market will determine it, but, you know, it depends on what we're doing, what else we're doing in the market that would generate a market as well, if you know what I mean. I mean, if we approve a lot more apartments, then this will probably generate more of a demand.
Date City, Pasco County, they have regulations where on certain corridors, they don't allow standalones, like in Pasco County, on their major arterials, so they got to be part of a mixed-use development. Date City also approved a mixed-use component that's very similar to that. So so we got a lot of options, more so with the indoor storage than, than you'll hear me talk about the other two categories. But if you all want to think about it, and maybe I'll circle back with you one-on-one and make sure that I understand. And of course, the mayor's not here, Lance isn't here, but I can get a consensus.
Well, yeah, and if we were to extend the moratorium, and talk about some of those things, we could always stop the moratorium at any time, right? We don't have to, if we extend it for a year, we don't have to do it for a year, we can rescind it. So I mean, worse comes to worse if we have to do that in order to have more discussions to make sure we get it right.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
Point of that, okay. I'll just quickly go through these other two areas. The second category is what we were just talking about. Outdoor storage and lay down areas was included in the moratorium. And the, this particular use is the storage of any product, materials, equipment, appliances, or personal property of any kind, including material lay down areas and yards. So, you know, the history on this, the concern has been when, when you have an undeveloped piece of property that's used solely for putting up a fence around the perimeter of this, and perimeter and storage of materials. You got no investment of building, you got no jobs that are being created. And sometimes with like a lay down area, whether it's materials, construction materials, it can be kind of unsightly. And, you know, a lot of times, typically, you'll see this in a light industrially zoned area. You know, is that how we want our light industrial properties developing? Now, if it's, you know, if it's a part of a use and it's ancillary use for outdoor storage, I think that, that's something that we're okay with right now.
By, by lay down, you mean like what's out there already with that one on the corner of?
Copeland and Chancy.
Copeland and Chancy, on both sides, laying in the mud, that kind of a place?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm against that.
Now, again, that, that is associated with a primary manufacturer. But sometimes you'll have that, people do that, not, not even the primary business or manufacturing with the jobs on it, so.
Oh, and if they do that, I don't have a problem with it, but that needs to be concealed behind.
Right, we could.
You know.
Bubbling or screening of some sort.
Right.
And, and not in the right way.
Yeah, because I mean, I think if, if it's part of the business, I mean, that's you know, that, that's, but like you said, screen it somehow or whatever, so it's not.
So a, as you saw in my memo, right now, I think we have that covered, where the current code does not allow outdoor storage as a primary use, only as an ancillary use. So we have that pretty much under control. This use may not be a concern unless we wanted to consider thresholds of what percentage of the property ancillary use could be used for that use. We, we've had one applicant that, that's proposing, you know, it's a manufacturer, but a very large amount of outdoor storage. So it, it's something that we're experiencing firsthand right now, so. I mean, is there thresholds that should be looked at where you have a, you know, it, it could be a very small building, but acres of outdoor storage. So that was something we were kind of debating, talking about with staff, and should we? Because we have a real life example that, that's very conceptual at this point, but, but a real life example. And if we go by our current code, it, it talks about that in the definitions of what, what percentage can be out store, outdoor storage area. So that, that's something that we're actively looking at, and that's probably the one. I think we cover the outdoor storage lay down areas okay with the current code and definitions. But again, that real life example of how, what percentage of the outdoor storage associated with a primary use is, is open for discussion right now.
Okay, and I think maybe we can cover that in some, in meetings, too, so we could see that?
Yeah.
What that, what that looks like.
Yeah, yeah, we need to do that. And then the last one is just RV storage, that could be RV boat, motorhome storage. And I, I think probably you all recollect some history on that, where we, we've had properties, they put up a fence, they made improved the lot. But we have some past history where that goes through a conditional use, but some recent ones, we required them to do some permanent structure enhancements on the property to create at least some ad valorem.
Well, I think, I think that was a good thing that we did, because it does, like you said, it creates an investment. And at least the ones that we've done in the past, they can be quickly converted to different industrial uses, too, as opposed to just putting a fence around a piece of vacant land and, and. So I think we need to continue with that investment, as we've already had, you know, two previous applicants do. That's my opinion anyways.
Yeah, right now, it, it's a conditional use, it's not permitted by right, so it's a CU, has to go through the process, just like we did on Mytech. And that's a conditional use in C three and LI zoning. We really have hardly any C three, so really, it's outdoor storage areas for that type of use. for that type of use are going to happen in the LI light industrial zoning. Again, some concerns with that. And you know, I I think we could look at. You you know, we've talked about the 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 infrastructure improvements made on the property. Do we have a certain percentage? Like I know the two that we've done, it's a percentage. Do we want to have a a standard threshold, a fifty percent that needs to be like those two that have gone through or? Uh, that was probably the the one question that staff had was.
Yeah, I think that probably included. I yeah, I think that maybe a conditional use is the way to go that you can allow it, but we can really look at it and limit the zoning districts to LI or.
Maybe it's just LI and take the C three out.
Well, there's hardly any C three here anyway. I mean, there's two pieces and they're built on.
Correct.
So.
Okay. Okay. Any other?
Do you have any other particular questions? And and I, yeah, I think I I would definitely like to get with you on some of those questions too, so I can look at some examples and stuff too. And I'm sure the rest of us would.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right.
Right. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Todd.
Yep.
Uh, let me hold on. Let's see. All right, city manager report.
The PIO be given an update on the rebranding?
Good evening. Kevin Weiss, City of Zephyr Hills Public Information Officer. I promised the city manager I'd keep this brief, so I'll try to run through everything as quick as possible. So it's been about a year now since we accepted the rebranding for the City of Zephyr Hills, almost a year to the date, September of 2023. And just want to reiterate, the purpose of the project was threefold. Stimulating economic development, defining our place in Pasco County and professionalization of municipal services. This is our primary logo with the iconic Z at the top. Zephyr Hills broken up into two colors. Research showed through our process or branding process that a lot of outsiders had difficulty pronouncing the words Zephyr Hills. I'll get calls usually a couple of times a week from people from Kansas or New York or wherever. And I've I've heard a lot of different variations of how they pronounce Zephyr Hills. So that kind of helps explain it to people a little bit. And then our tagline, Jump Right In, which has a little bit of an homage to water and skydiving, but also can be adapted for much more than that. These are a couple of different variations of our logo. So we have the standalone icon on the left in the middle is our primary logo and tagline. And then over there on the right is our logo without the tagline. And then this is our department logo family. So if you notice, all of the departments shown here um, are in the same font and within the color palette that was approved through our rebranding. And then you, of course, have the police patch as well, where the Z is within the patch. And then chief and the city manager were okay with putting the state of Florida kind of interloped within there as well. Um, as part of our rebranding, the firm that we worked with, North Star Place Branding and Marketing, they provided us with a lot of deliverables, including brand guidelines, how to use the logo, how not to use the logo, what fonts to use, which fonts not to use, so on and so forth. And I just want to run through quickly and show some graphics of what we've done thus far and where we plan to go in the future as well. So here's a look at our website. This is a screen grab from about a month ago. So you can see the the logo is prominent and then our colors and fonts are used throughout as well. Here's a screen grab of our Instagram page. Social media templates. Fleet vehicles. So on the left is one of the admin vehicles that we had partially wrapped. And then on the right is my right, I should say, is a Zephyr Hills Building Department vehicle. Garbage and recycling bins. So going forward, any reorders we have, we will implement this brand plate, heat stamp it on to our garbage and recycling bins, and those will be deployed out in the community. An example of a decal for commercial dumpsters going forward. Flagpole banner, as if you've driven along through Fifth Avenue, you see these colorful banners that are present. Uh, these are examples of some letterhead collateral, stationary, business cards, T-shirt, drawstring banner, envelope, notepad, wristband, lapel pen, as Councilwoman Wilkinson is wearing presently. Um, and this was actually, um, got to give kudos to the Human Resources Department. Recently, we had done a or they had done an employee connections, basically bringing in the new employees together. And we were able to give them a few giveaways, kind of welcoming welcoming them to the team. And they got a T-shirt, a bag, wristband, uh, and also got to learn about the history of Zephyr Hills as well and had lunch with some of the supervisors. Um, now going forward, these are some ideas and possibilities that we could implement in the real life environment. We've done a lot in the digital environment, but now we want to target the real life environment as well. Bricks and sticks, as as you might say. Gail, our CRA director, has been working on park signage throughout the city. And I think it was the last CRA meeting that this was presented where you have a column and our iconic Z will be backlit or pinlit. And then the name of the park is there on the body. Welcome to Hercules Park. And the the idea is to standardize these across all of our parks in Zephyr Hills. Depending on the size of the park, it might just fit the column. Uh, if it's a a large park like Zephyr Park or Cruisin' Park, then you can fit this whole this whole sign. Um, an example of an entryway signage. This was presented by our branding firm, but just goes gives a little representation of what we'd like to do of having some entryway gateway signage that basically tells you, hey, you're in Zephyr Hills. You've arrived here. And we've kind of piggybacked the idea of, you know, maybe we have every direction of the city from north, east, southwest, maybe off fifty four, maybe coming in from three oh one, your Shepherd Park. So that's something that we're hopefully working towards in the future. Uh, our lobby wall right now, if you notice, it's blank and uh, had some conversations with some people on what we'd like to have there. And here's an example, an idea of having our logo backlit. I don't know if you all have any thoughts or suggestions on going forward with something like this, but just wanted to bring it up.
Big enough.
We could make, we could parcel it down.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, we could scale it down.
I think there was another image I saw somewhere that is a little bit.
Smaller.
Yeah, a little smaller.
And I have a question, may I ask? You have here on your future ideas, branded municipal building monument sign. What is that?
I'll I'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess the consensus is making this a little bit smaller.
Well, I don't know. That first picture show would almost look too small.
Yeah.
Kind of like.
Now, this is almost too big. So maybe kind of somewhere in the middle.
But I mean, we need to utilize that space. So.
Yeah.
In some manner.
The pictures of council up there?
No.
I mean, historic pictures, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put them underneath or to the side or something like that as well. So. All right. Yeah, we have. I think we have pictures of uh, previous council members and current council members as well.
Yeah, we have a, well, never mind.
Yeah, all right. Moving along. Example of what our water tower could look like in the future, getting that repainted. Um, I recently spoke to John Bostick, Utilities Director, and he said that's probably four to five years away. But these are a couple renderings provided by our branding firm. I don't know if you all have a preference for one or the other, but this is kind of one of one of the ideas out there.
Take him five years to do that?
I guess based on what he told me is that.
Probably doesn't need to be repainted until five years.
Oh, yeah. Okay, there we go. So. Um, an example of branded street signs with the standalone identifier Z there. Myself, Public Works Director Shane LeBlanc, and a couple of other public works representatives, as well as uh, one of our interns visited the City of Lakeland a couple of months ago. And I believe Shane's getting a new sign printing technology in the new budget. And we went down to Lakeland or over to Lakeland and they showed us how they get their icon on all of their street signs. And it's a pretty cool technology. It's really just dragging the logo to where you want it on the street sign and then printing it out in that prismatic. So it was a pretty cool experience. As you can see, they're really known for their swan. That's kind of what they they like to highlight. So that's on every single one of their street signs within the city limits. And even going further, they've drummed up wayfinding signage on the left, like it's kind of hard to see. But on that computer screen, the gentleman has Publix Corporate Headquarters um, on one. Another one shows where the library is and the Museum of Arts is, um, street parking, nuisance abatement board sign. So just a couple other examples out there. And that can all be done with that sign printing technology. Uh, an example of the column that Gail has been working on, the idea is to put that at the intersection of three oh one and Fifth Avenue. Um, and that's just a rendering design from our branding firm. And then um, that's kind of more of a closer look design of what it could be on the right. Example of a mural, the city has been working with Main Street, Antoine, the Design Committee on getting a mural similar to this on one of the buildings downtown. Vicki Wiggins with the Chamber of Commerce, the East Pasco Chamber of Commerce has agreed to have her building painted with a mural that showcases our rebranding. So this is those ideas. And I should note, the lady or the girl that's in that picture, she's not really there. That's just kind of an example of somebody standing up to that parachute and getting a picture or two or three. Um, and then Steve, getting to your question about municipal building monument sign. And so as we are planning to build a new city yard complex, this is just a uh, an example of what the City of Johnson City does with one of their buildings. So this it would have some sort of ode to our brand, our logo, and it would say, you know, City of Zephyr Hills, City Complex. So that's just kind of a an example of what it could be. Kind of designating what the the city buildings are. And then here's another example from Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, provided by our branding firm of what their industrial park, business park looks like. And I know Todd had mentioned having some sort of industrial park gateway signage and not necessarily looking like this, maybe more so with what we're doing with Hercules Park and the other parks, but incorporating that Z or incorporating our branding in some way, letting people know that, hey, you've you've entered the City of Zephyr Hills industrial corridor. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. I think that was looks pretty good. I really liked the uniformity of the vehicles in town now. Before, you wouldn't know if it was somebody just had a private business or whatever. So this, I think that really looks good. And some of the ideas you threw up there uh, look really good too. So.
Yeah, that that goes back to the professionalization of municipal services and and standardizing and having cohesion across the board because I I've had people tell me that they didn't know what depart if it was even a city department previously. So getting everybody under the same brand, I think, is important.
I've had mostly positive responses to what we've done too. I think everybody seems to like it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll have to admit, um, when this was first brought before us and Billy and I spoke of it, I wasn't super excited about the rebranding because of the cost. But since we've done it, I really like what we've done. And like Council President Burgess has said, I've gotten a lot of good response from it.
That's great.
I I like it. I I think that I would just be careful with some of the signs. I mean, the one we just did for Hercules was like eighty thousand dollars. So I don't think we need to go every, you know. Yeah. And I think if you're talking about the one for downtown, the median, I kind of like the one that's picked not pictured, but the the one on the right.
Let me see if I I might have passed it there. Did I pass it already?
Above the mural.
That one?
Yeah. I like the design there rather than the Z kind of.
Yeah, and that's, I believe Billy can talk to that. But that's the idea to to take that column from Hercules Park and basically implant it right there at three oh one, Fifth Avenue.
That idea better.
So. Yeah. All right.
Right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. At this time, we had a resident who missed the citizens' comments and had a couple of questions on some items that we've already covered and voted on. But um, I want to go ahead and give her three minutes to ask those questions. And when you and when you're done with those questions, if we if we can't answer them right then, uh, we could maybe give you an answer or at least point you in the right direction to get the answer. So you have three minutes for your questions. And then also state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cindy Dowell. He and I live right over by the middle school, three eight five two nine eleventh.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
I Cindy Dowell. And I live in the historic district portion by the middle school. I I have a few questions, but I also wanted to ask, um, does anyone know how much low income we have in the city? Because we have a lot of minimum wage jobs. Does anyone know? How much low income housing? For the people that work here?
I can't answer that.
That only make eight dollars an hour.
We have, we have low income projects, you know, not projects, but developments.
Okay.
Um, a couple of them are on Twentieth Street and North Avenue in there. But low income in particular, not much.
Okay, down there at Twentieth Avenue, almost all of that is sex offenders. So if you're talking about a woman, a lot of sex offenders down at that end where you were talking about for the low income. Where, um, I lived in Michigan in a low income apartment, it was a beautiful apartment. I thank God I had that. I went through a divorce. I had three little kids. I was trying to go to school and work full time. And that saved me. I have a daughter that's going to be a doctor. I have another one that is a general manager. And I have a son that is raising his little little child, working full time. None, they're the hardest working kids you'd ever want. I'm I'm very proud of my children. But they wouldn't have turned out like that had I not had low income, had I not been able to put a roof over their head, had I not had the chance to take care of them. So when we have all of these people with so little income and no decent place to raise their children, we're going to get what we we're going to reap what we sow. And if we want what you guys are after, which you're doing a beautiful job on the city. It looks nice. I love it. Um, you know, I mean, my house value has gone up a hundred thousand in just six years. So I can't complain about what you guys are doing to improve the city. But what I can tell you is that there are a lot of hardworking, I mean, like um, women at working at Win Dixie. I mean, the ones that are doing, taking care of us. They're doing service jobs, but they're not making enough money to pay any of these rents. Eighteen hundred dollars is so out of reach. You have to cram ten people in there. And so we're making our homeless problem worse. And three weeks before the governor's law goes into effect. So my questions are, what are we going to do about that? And I understand the problem with drugs. I understand that we need rehab for people. But I have talked to people out there that are disabled. I have talked to people out there that aren't on any drugs. And they just simply can't pay rent. So the apartment that I lived in was better than most of these full rate apartments. It was beautiful, three bedroom, no problem. There is no reason, e- even with the tiny houses, to to house some of the single people. There's no reason we can't make them nice, make them affordable.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, do you do you have? Do you have questions? Because you have three minutes and.
Yeah, it's almost. Okay. So what are we doing with that rate that you're raising on my water bill? How much of that that you're raising on all of us is going to go towards fixing the problem of not being able to? do any land development? Other than industrial?
Rates on the water?
Yeah, you're raising 3% and then 3% on the rate and 3% on the other.
Yeah, that was the one thing you had missed.
I'm just wondering if they're going to fix the problem that, because you guys put a moratorium in, that there's no more construction.
Right. Well, fix the problem as to the water issue, the raising the rates won't do anything to the water consumption.
So they're not going to be able to do anything?
That would raise, the, the rate increase hasn't been increased in, what was it, three years? And, and that has nothing to do with the, the swift mud permit that we're looking at for the moratorium.
Still in trouble for the consumption?
Well, we're still waiting, we're still in the process of it, but I would, I would ask you if you could probably come into City Hall and, and get better answers on that.
The utility rate increase only goes, goes right back into the utility department.
For all operations of the utility.
Goes for the operations and it goes for
Equipment.
Equipment. So that goes right back into the utility department to maintain it and put in pipes and, and do what they do.
Okay. I do AutoCAD design review, doing estimating. So I've offered to help some of the homeless try to develop a place, but then I find out that we can't do it. And so my question is, if, if we do, I mean, are you guys going to be able to maybe consider letting us build some low income? If we're willing to use the better toilets, the, all of the water consumption?
Well, all, all of those things we're, we do right now with, we have initiatives for that, Water Smart, I believe it's called.
Florida Water Star.
We already have those things in place. And as far as the low income housing, I mean, that's, you know, as we look at developments, that's one of the questions you always have, what is some of the, what is that going to target on that? So, I mean, that just comes with the developments as they come in.
If, if I may ask a question?
Go ahead.
You had mentioned about developing, building houses. Are you looking at building subdivisions? Or are you looking at infill individual lots?
Looking at some of the larger lots, we were hoping to build a, a few, quite a few.
So.
Small individual and then build a clubhouse that would actually provide for more of, of what they need, just tiny houses. We were looking at that. We could also build some duplexes. I'm wondering what you guys allow, is basically what I want to know.
So our moratorium is anything over one acre. So if you have anything under an acre that you would like to develop, would be considered infill. And our moratorium does not address that or, or does not impact the infill development on lots less than one acre.
Okay. Would you allow many houses so that you could maybe do like, if they were made out of block, if they look nice, if, you know?
Those are all conversations that we have to have, yes. So we have to look at it. You have to look at the density on the properties, what the zoning is, what that density, what density is allowed on those properties. And that's a conversation I think we'd have to have with council because we looked at reducing the densities from 20 down back to 14. And so based on this, to do tiny homes, we've had some requests on a lot very near First Baptist Church. But the issue is, is density and being able to take a quarter acre lot and when you do the math, it come, you know, to put two units on there, three units, whatever, it comes out to more than 14 units an acre.
You have three tiny, tiny homes already over there, don't we?
We do.
Yeah.
I just wanted to share, to answer the lady's question, and I'd be happy to meet with you and I can share from a planning department's perspective, what we're doing to try to address affordability in housing. About 750 manufacturing jobs. They'll be making about $20 an hour, some of them, some higher, but we, we have an example, some container homes that a bunch of us are going to go look at as a just one option, park models. We, we got some examples, much smaller, 400, 600 square foot living units that, that will be much more affordable than anything that's out there right now. So be happy to meet with you and discuss further with you and some of the ideas that we're investigating to address affordable housing in Zephyr Hills.
Well, I was interested in trying to start a 501(c)(3) for affordable, for, for low income housing and just do a nonprofit. Because all of the corporations that come across my desk are all for profit and I don't think we're going to get there.
Well, I think, and I think your fir, your first step on that probably would be meet with Todd and go and look at, but what we, you know, what's allowed first of all, and then what things we can do and you can kind of move forward from there.
Do you know what exactly your, your plans are for low income for the next, I mean, what your plans are for the homeless? Do you guys got something?
Well, on the homeless, we have an initiative that I think if you come up here and a city manager can probably direct you into what we're doing with the, with that initiative, the homeless initiative that we have. Something for a, you know, different discussion that you can just find out what we have in place right now.
Okay. And then let me see. How far do they have to be from the school for a homeless shelter?
Again, those are things that you, you probably should come up and get with the planning department and, and find out what, what everything is allowed, where it's allowed at.
Okay. Because the only thing I, I knew was that if there, if sex offenders aren't supposed to be within a certain distance and, and drugs. And there's a few things like that that I know have got to be far enough away.
Well, again, that, that initiative that we have and we, we kind of well, like I can't, I don't know all the details of it myself.
There's a nonprofit in town called CHIPS. And it's in coordination with, it's a, a nonprofit that works with other agencies in our police department. And they work on homeless initiatives. We have a, one police officer who is a homeless liaison officer that works with the homeless and then they use referrals and work with mental health agencies and other agencies. So CHIPS is a volunteer organization. They work out of the, their house at the Genesis Center on 7th Street and 15th Avenue, I think.
Well, I do bids for.
Out of the police department and, and with the police chiefs.
Right. I do bids for like D.R. Horton, Taylor Morrison, all of the big builders. And I'm just wondering if I, I mean, is that something that you guys would need involved in order to get something developed for them? I mean, I can see if some of these builders will offer help and assistance.
Yeah, I, I mean.
If you have land.
Yeah, I think that if you got with the CHIPS organization, they could tell you what they're doing. We help fund that and work with the police department.
Right. But that's just money.
I think as far as a shelter goes, that's a Pasco County issue. It's a much bigger than Zephyr Hills issue.
Right.
So to build a shelter.
Have land available?
It's a conversation that we need to have with Pasco County.
So.
I, I can't tell you that there's land available or not without going and looking. So it's a, a shelter issue is, is much bigger than City of Zephyr Hills.
Right.
So we need to schedule a meeting that we can get Pasco County at.
Okay. Most of those people don't have cars. They need to be close enough.
We need to have the individuals to have the meeting with Pasco County.
No, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the people that, that we'd be servicing. They, they need to be somewhere close enough to town to meet their needs.
So let me be clear what I said. I didn't say that it's not in Zephyr Hills. What I said is we need to have the conversation with Pasco County to look at the situation.
Ask him Pasco. Thank you.
My understanding is we've already begun conversations with Pasco. I can get your information and get you in contact with the right individual.
I mean, Pasco County has a homeless coalition that they operate and it's, they get federal and state funding. They work with the Board of County Commissioners. The, the county is purchasing land in West Pasco right now for homeless shelter for homeless people. The CHIPS organization works with homeless and, and helps try for referral and assistance. So we work in conjunction with the county, but the county's a lead agency. In countywide, they would have to provide shelter and things like, we're not big enough to do that.
Right.
We work, as I told you, we have a police liaison officer and the, the, the police department operates the CHIPS organization and has a social worker there that helps work with individuals in the town. We aren't kind of in the business to build housing in terms of that. We would work with developers or other people.
Federal government. Okay. But for low income, like hood housing? Is that something?
That's, well, that would be Pasco County as well. The county has, has a community development division and they do housing and community development block grants and all those things for those situations. And the, the idea is that you're not duplicating what everyone else is doing. Everybody that wants to set up a 501(c)(3) competes actually with other people that are trying to do the same thing unless they have actually a plan established to work out how they're going to operate it and, and fund it. Because the funding's the main problem.
And I would recommend getting with the county and, and you know, maybe making them aware of some of your ideas and, and concerns. And I think that would be a good approach for you with some of the ideas you might have. So.
I just know that if they're sleeping in their car.
Yeah, that's a.
You know, and instead of a low income housing where they can actually take care of their kids.
As, as Councilman Spina said, that's, that's kind of where we have to attack that problem from is that, at that level. So.
But now that I make a good income, I make a good income because I got to go to school and I got to take care of my kids and I have.
And did we answer, you had questions on the water rates? I will tell you on the water rates, we, we will address that again on the September 23rd meeting. And the meeting, they always start at six o'clock. So I don't know where it'll be on the agenda, but you can hear a little bit more of analysis on that.
And the next time, the next meeting?
September 23rd. There are every, or the second and fourth Mondays of the month at six o'clock.
Sorry. If you give your information to the clerk, then we can get you in contact with the correct person.
And I thank you, Ms. Dowell, if I've pronounced that right correctly. Okay. Mayor is not here, so we have no mayor announcements. We'll go to the city manager announcements.
Just a reminder, the joint meeting with Pasco County and the other east side cities is tomorrow morning at 9:30 at the fairgrounds. So if your council's riding with us, we're leaving at nine o'clock. Thank you to the Pasco County Emergency Management with their help at Silver Oaks and the pumping there. And then also I know the Public Works Director reached out to Pasco EM today about Ninth Avenue. That's the, the other, the lone road that we have flooded currently. So reached out to them, see if we can get some assistance there. And then if you saw the, the Instagram post that I sent to you yesterday, Mortoglu, Patrick Mortoglu posted that he's opening an academy in Zephyr Hills. So the tennis world quickly started Googling where Zephyr Hills was. So the message is out there now. So we're on the map with Dubai and China and France and places like that. So that's all I have for this evening. Yeah.
Why?
City, uh, city attorney.
Nothing for me.
All right. City council, I'll start with the council's.
I just have, I, I stood in for the mayor Saturday at the Museum of Military History. They held a 9/11 ceremony. It was a really nice ceremony. They had a firefighter there speaking who had been on the scene in Manhattan during the, at Ground Zero. They had a Gold Star Mother there whose son was killed in Afghanistan in the aftermath of 9/11. Couple other military veterans. And it was a very nice reflection on the day and, and what had occurred. They had, skydivers came in with a flag. So it was a nice ceremony. Hot. Very hot.
I have two things. I'm grateful that we've sworn in four new officers. That's always exciting. And I, I appreciate the, our I appreciate Todd and his team, Tommy Lee, who gave a great presentation. You always do. And it's glad, I'm glad to know that when Todd retires, we'll be in good hands with planners. Not rushing you, Todd. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say that I've had an inordinate amount of complaints about flooding in the older section of town, more than I've ever had in my entire service to the city council. You know, I know that there are, we have over time tried to resolve some of the issues. For example, one good example is 20th Street where they created a swale, they created culverts. And we, you know, they purchased a house, they tore the house down, they created a, a retention pond. But you know, we have to continue to invest in the older part of downtown. You know, we get these impact fees and we have all this, all this activity in these newer properties. But the reality is, is that we still have an obligation to our existing residents to continue to improve infrastructure in the older part of downtown. A lot of the challenge, I try to explain to people, we don't have right of way. We don't have, we don't have the space to make some of these major improvements that, you know, that are required to move water from point A to point B. And you know, there's been some complaints or some misunderstandings that the creation of the sidewalks has exacerbated the problem. All that does is retain the water on the site. There's still the issue of getting rid of the water. A lot of times, these are just older properties and over time the, the roads, you know, have, have the elevation of the roads have changed some, but it isn't, the amount of water in theory, she, you know, sheeting off of the roads isn't increased. So, so that was one of the things is that, and I also wanted to thank our staff. I think that our city manager, several of our local representatives and our staff, Shane and his team worked nonstop. I, I saw posts on the internet. I saw emails back and forth. I saw even, you know, some coverage in the press. So thanks again for all your hard work on this. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And then, then just to follow up on that, then, you know, according to one gentleman that came and he talked about the road being built up and, and through time, as you repave, well, yes, naturally it's going to be a little bit higher. So and I'm, and I'm hoping that just finding that one culvert that was blocked up, that will resolve his particular issue. And it it might be a lot of that in other areas too, where it's just a matter of getting some things you know, unblocked or even cleaned out. I mean, you know, when you're not flooding, you don't think about it until, until it actually happens. So probably something we need to kind of, as you were saying, as we move forward, look in those older districts and areas and see what we can do to try to mitigate. But I will say, I, I appreciate the Public Works Department because they've been through a lot here in the last couple of weeks. You guys and the city and the county and the state and some, like you said, our representatives have all come together to try and alleviate as much as we can. Not only the city residents, but the, the county residents too, which is all part of it. Cause you know, water is going to go where it's historically gone. So, and I think that everybody's been working in good partnership with all the, the entities involved. And once, you know, we'll just hope it doesn't rain as much as it, I think we kind of dodged this and it sounds like so. But go ahead. You had a.
Just two things. First one on water. If the flooding downtown, and I know there's spots that seems like it doesn't matter what amount of rain we get, there's, there's standing water. But the event and the flooding that we experienced on September 3rd, that was four and a half inches in an hour and a half. There's not a system that can handle that. And so that's the message we're trying, of course, that doesn't, that doesn't make the resident feel, get the woman fuzzy or, you know, feel good when they have water standing in their yard that's, you know,
Right.
X number of inches or feet deep. But that event exceeded the, you know, it's a hundred year storm event, which means it's a 1% chance of it happening within a year. So that's, that was, I think, the issue in the downtown. And again, we've heard the same complaints of staff. Sidewalks caused the problem, the, the, the road, you know, being raised, all those sorts of things. But four and a half inches in a, in an hour and a half's time.
But the water table is already saturated.
Exactly. All bets are off at that, at that time. And we just pray that it doesn't get, you know, doesn't flood anybody. So we're addressing the issues that we can. Four and a half inches an hour, I don't think we'll ever be able to handle that. You know, the low areas will still get wet and, and stage up. I will say, by the morning time, most of those locations had dried up. The areas that historically hold water, held water. Henry Drive, which is now dry, as long as it doesn't rain. Again, like it did tonight. Terradale, the Ninth Avenue there has, has gone back down. The standing area that we have is Ninth Avenue between Beach and Cypress. That pond area, again, historically has held water. So we're working, we, Shane has reached out to Pasco EM and to see if we can't get that pumped down to a level that at least individuals can get in and out of their driveways. The road may, may not be passable, but at least they can get in and out of their, other driveways. And then just a reminder, I forgot to mention on Wednesday, there's a, an event at the Veterans Memorial at Zephyr Park. 10 o'clock? 11 o'clock? I think invitation's been sent to you, but then also there's a, Pasco County is dedicating their fallen officer memorial there at the courthouse. Either at 10 or 11. So we can get, I think those invitations have been sent out to each of you, if you're interested in those. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah. And then Wednesday morning after we left out there Tuesday, of course, the water was over ankle deep in the parking lot. And I drove around Wednesday to some of the same spots, 7th Street and, and the water had gone down. Fifth Avenue was clear, 7th Street was clear. So it was, most of the places had gone back down except for those couple of really bad areas. But then again, I appreciate Public Works and all that they've done leading up to this and hopefully we won't have any more rains like that for a while. All right. If there's nothing further, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
So what I will say is.